Nally Vacation Staff Recommendation is Conformance With The Comprehensive Plan. Are there any ex parte communications to be disclosed on these applications?
I see none. Paul?
Good afternoon, Paul Barnes, Planning Staff. As stated, there are two items that we're reviewing before you at this time, both related to an expansion of the Bryan East Hospital campus. The driving project for expanding the special permit and requesting the street vacations is for a new medical office building which is highlighted on the site plan. So what we're looking at is Cotner Boulevard coming along here, this is A Street, and then this would be Forty-Eighth Street over here to the west. So the expansion area for the special permit is about eight acres just northeast of the existing Bryan East Campus. This area has been shown as public and semi-public on the future land use map in anticipation of an expansion of the hospital campus. So we have been working with Bryan East for some time, knowing that they've been acquiring these properties. As of today, the single-family homes that were there are now demolished, they are gone in anticipation of this expansion. The medical office building is just over ninety-three thousand square feet that is proposed, and there is a request to waive the maximum height of the district for this building up to seventy-four feet. Given the location of where this medical office building would be located, it's located over three hundred feet from the remaining residential areas, so we don't see that that would be a significant impact with increasing the height. Also, there are other buildings within the campus that are much taller than seventy-four feet, so it seems to fit in. The streets that are being vacated include a portion of Fiftieth Street which today connects to the intersection of Cotner and A. The city has been looking at this Cotner A and South Fiftieth Street intersection for some time. It's a six-leg intersection with traffic signals, just given the different turning movements and things that happen at that intersection. You know, it is supported to close Fiftieth Street with this request. So that will be an improvement and an enhancement to that intersection. Separate from that, though, but a conversation that's taking place, the city is looking at Fiftieth Street and its connection to the north of this intersection. That vacation and that closure is not going to happen with this action, but those discussions are going to continue moving forward. Two other streets are being, are requested to be vacated with this. That would be Everett Street, which is between Fifty-Second and Fiftieth, and then there's a Washington Street between those two streets as well. And these were all local streets that were serving the single-family houses that were there, so we are supportive of that vacation request to allow for this expansion. There are some utilities within those rights-of-way, and there will be easements retained over the vacated right-of-way, as well as there's a sewer that kind of comes along through Washington Street. There's going to be a new easement dedicated to accommodate a new connection of that sewer. Along with this campus expansion, planning and Public Works have been talking to the Bryan East folks about additional road improvements surrounding the campus. Namely, that has to do with the Cotner and A Street intersection, looking over at Forty-Eighth and A, and then also down at Forty-Eighth and Sumner. And so you'll see on this revised site plan that this hatched area denotes potential future right-of-way to be dedicated once street improvements were, to become a real project and to be done by the city. It's preliminary, and a lot of work yet needs to be done, but there is a discussion ongoing of having roundabouts at these intersections to help with the traffic movements and traffic flow of the area, and also what's generated by the Bryan facility itself. Just a couple of conditions of approval that I'll note, which I think we need some further discussion on, have to do with internal connectivity of this campus between the expansion area and the rest of the Bryan facility. If you look at what's shown on this site plan, essentially, this eight acres of expansion is somewhat self-contained and separate from the rest of the campus. And when we look at projects like this, we always look at connectivity in terms of pedestrian connections and vehicular connections. And so in any development, whether it's a new subdivision or an expansion of, you know, a hospital campus, this is, this is an important feature and key component to look at. So what we've recommended in the conditions of approval are a couple of connections that are not on the site plan today. So this, that's called a private drive and service drive, is vacated Everett Street. It actually comes up, to this point, just north of the future building. One of the recommendations is to provide some type of a vehicular access that would connect back up and through this existing parking lot today. The reason for that is, is if, for any reason, which could be multiple scenarios, multiple what-ifs, someone in a car would need to go from this area over to this area, you know, they would have quite a ways to get out onto the existing street system and go over to that other facility in a car. Kind of coupling with that, there's a recommendation to make that pedestrian connection to the west as well. So what we have today, I'll just put this up here. So this is where Fiftieth Street exists, this would be Washington, and this is a parking lot just to the west. There is a pedestrian connection with this sidewalk today that someone can take to get onto the Fiftieth Street sidewalk. And what we're saying, if you look on the plan here, this is that sidewalk. What we're recommending is that that connection and that path just be continued further to the east, so someone, say, over here, could get to the entrance of the medical office building over here. Otherwise, you know, they have a longer path to take, you know, further around to go. So these aren't huge segments of connections, but in the overall scheme of things, they could make a big impact on the overall connectivity within the campus.
Questions?
I do.
Go ahead.
Paul, can you talk to me about Holmes Elementary? And I'm specifically wondering about, are we going to have, refresh my memory, is there, I don't believe there's a stoplight right now at Fifty-Second, is there?
Fifty-Second and Sumner?
No, Fifty-Second and A.
There's not a stoplight at that intersection, but just off from that, there's a, there is a signal for pedestrian crossings.
Okay, so it's actually, causes traffic to stop kind of signal?
Yeah.
Okay. Have we talked to, for instance, the principal at Holmes Elementary about drop-off and pickup times and how, I'm just wondering about the traffic impact on the school and the kids coming out. The only problem, I like this idea, and the only concern I have is that if we're closing Fiftieth Street, then somebody wanting to come out and go westbound onto A, you know, turning left onto A can be pretty tricky, so are we funneling them down right past the elementary school? And if so, you know, I just want to know if we've talked to the school, if they feel like they need to adjust their pickup, you know, the way that they rotate around and that kind of thing.
Our office had not had a meeting with the school present, but they should have received a notice through this request through our office. Now, there will be two ways that vehicles from this medical office building could go north to A Street and then take a left or right turn. There's a new access proposed on A. With the closure of Fiftieth, you know, this has been requested and did require deviation request, which has been approved by the Public Works folks. The reason was, there were some issues with the D cell lane and the turn lane to get into the site, but looking at the overall constraints and benefits of that, the deviation request was approved. So that would be a new access point for vehicles in this area to get to A Street. Then there's also an access proposed on Fifty-Second Street. Now, cars could go south and go past the school, but they could also go north to A and take that movement.
It's just, you know, that A is such a busy street right there, I just, I'm concerned that we're setting up a situation where people are, if they're going to try and go that way, they're just always going to go down to Sumner. And I guess I'm just wondering if, you know, anybody's considered, you know, even having a little sign that says, you know, "local traffic only during school days" or something. I know it wouldn't prevent someone from doing it, but it might discourage it. I just am concerned with all the parking places and the traffic that we're running them right down past the elementary school, and I would feel better if I knew that the principal had been part of the actual conversation about the impact. So, and I don't know if Public Works, maybe Public Works has talked to the principal, or maybe I can ask the applicant.
I think it'd be a good question.
All right, I'll do that.
Other questions?
I have one. So the waiver request is to increase the maximum height to twenty-four feet, right?
Seventy-four feet, right?
But the increase, to increase the maximum height to seventy-four feet for the new building?
Yes.
Yeah. And then it says on, on page six, it says, "A new building is proposed for a maximum of seventy-five feet in height." So should it still say seventy-four, or should it say seventy-five?
I'm wondering if that's maybe a typo in the, in the report. I think that it is a request to go up to seventy-four feet, which, if you look in the conditions of approval, at the bottom of page six, it does talk about a waiver of maximum permitted height of seventy-four feet, so that would be in the resolution.
So we're talking seventy-four?
Yeah.
Butterfied that. Anything else? Paul?
Okay.
Applicant? Do you want me to leave that?
Good afternoon, members of the Planning Commission, Danae Calkowski, appearing today on behalf of Bryan. We have a team here today, so we're going to go ahead and have, well, David Reese and Dawn Sheets from Bryan are here, Wade Stang from Davis Design, and Mark Palmer from Olson Associates. I'm going to go ahead and let David start, he's going to give you a little bit of the history of the site and the neighborhood outreach that's occurred, then I'll come up and talk about the conditions of approval, and then we'll have the engineers and architects, let them talk a little bit more about, specifically about the site and how that relates to those conditions of approval. And then we'll all be available, the whole team, for questions when we're done.
Good afternoon, my name's David Reese, Vice President of Clinical and Support Services, and I've been at Bryan Medical Center for, going on nineteen years at Bryan. And I just want to, just real quickly, give you kind of a little bit of the history about why we're expanding and where we're going. Like I said to you earlier, I've been at Bryan for nineteen years, and in that period of time, had the chance with working on our facilities during that whole time span. And during that time, I remember vividly working with individuals from Planning Department, Ray Hill being one of them, if you remember, some of you may remember Ray, and talking about, where's the future growth for Bryan and Bryan Medical Center? And it was discussed always, as with comprehensive plan, of looking, going to the northeast here in this area. So during that timeframe, we started purchasing houses when they came up for sale. Within the past, I'd say, year or so, we've been a little more proactive with about seven more houses that were remaining. Going to those folks who's saying, "If you're ever interested in selling, we'd be interested," to the point that we ended up waking up and we had all the houses in that area. So then that started the process for us to be able to start looking at this as our campus has grown and our services have grown, as Lincoln has grown, we've had a need to be able to move forward on this. So if you look at this, our building here is our medical office building and outpatient area where it's going to be a standalone facility that will provide us services and future services for the community, for people to be able to access into that building and really be there for that day and then gone. There's no overnight stay or anything of that nature like a hospital setting itself. In addition to that, we ended up, as part of this process, having two neighbor meetings. We met with our neighbors on August twenty-seventh, and also met again on November tenth to just give them updates as to what's going on, where we're at in the process, purchasing houses, why we're purchasing houses, and just talk through some of that as well. You mentioned Homeschool. We had met with Homeschool, the principal, a few years back related to our emergency department project, and also talked about our future growth up in this area as well. He did not attend our neighbor meetings, but we can reach out with him again on that. But we have comprised of, you know, meeting with him, especially on our past projects, and kept him apprised of where we're growing as a medical center for the future as well. And so a lot of work's been done on that. Then we also did some personal visits for the folks across A Street in the north side and down by Cotner. I went door-to-door just to try to see those that couldn't make it to the meeting, do they have any questions, do they have any issues whatsoever, to make sure we're being that good neighbor, because that's what we really strive to do, to be that good neighbor, because we want a good neighborhood around the hospital, just as much as anyone else does. So at this point, that kind of talks a little bit about what we've done in keeping the neighbors apprised and some of the outreach that we've done, but I'll hand it over now to Danae to talk further about.
This is my favorite sign. So as Paul mentioned, we really have two applications before you today, the special permit application for the expansion, and then also the vacation for the residential streets that will no longer be necessary once we get the special permit approved. So just as, as David stated, there have been some extensive meetings with the neighbors. There's also been, you know, a lot of meetings with city staff. I think probably a first meeting occurred over a year ago, and then really kind of started in earnest in August or the summer, where we started meeting with staff and going over the site and some of the, the conditions. And then once we submitted, we also continued to have meetings with staff to address some of the issues and site conditions that they had come up with, and even delayed our scheduling on Planning Commission to try and work through those issues. And for the most part, we're able to work through a lot of them with respect to the potential future right-of-way dedication and then some other site-related issues. I think Bryan worked really hard to compromise on a lot of those things and tried, tried when it was able to, you know, work with the city and address the conditions and comments that they had. But we do have, we do have a couple things that are being required or on the list of conditions that are problematic for Bryan. And so we don't have agreement on Planning's requirement that Bryan provide that pedestrian sidewalk connection and the vehicular connection from the existing parking lot or the new parking lot to the west across Fiftieth Street. And so you're going to see those two items, they're listed on the conditions of approval as item 2.3 and 2.7. So I've handed out to you a motion to amend. We're requesting really three things. The deletion of 2.3, which is the pedestrian connection, the deletion of 2.5, which I believe Planning is in concurrence with, this was just to give Public Works an opportunity to review the revised plans that we submitted. They've had an opportunity to do that, we used their plan when we put it on our plan, so I think we're all good with that. We don't want to leave that open-ended beyond Planning Commission, so we're requesting the removal of 2.5. And then our other request is, is not the deletion of 2.7 on that connection, but an amendment to that. So instead of making the connection to the west, Bryan's proposing to make a connection to the south, which would probably address some of Kathy's comment about, is there another way to get out of the site, get down to Sumner without using Fifty-Second Street? And adding this connection would allow that. So there really are two, two main issues with making the connection to the west between the existing parking lot and the new parking lot across to vacated Fiftieth Street. We have both physical and some functional problems with making those connections. And the first one is the physical, and that's largely that, that we have some significant grade issues when we get this site developed and everything laid out and deal with the grade that's on the site. We have a significant grade differential from the west edge of the new parking lot over to the east edge of that existing parking lot. And I'm going to let Wade and Mark address those issues a little more specifically for you, because you can understand why that problem comes up. And then the second thing is, the connections at this location are not desired by Bryan from an operational or a functional standpoint either. I don't know if you've been in there, but that current parking lot that exists on the north side of the parking garage was designed, it's utilized right now for employee parking. It was not laid out in a manner that's conducive to through traffic through there, and it doesn't currently connect to Fiftieth Street, so it's problematic just from a design standpoint. I think a second item is that, just from a use standpoint, Bryan really does not want people who are going to be utilizing this building parking over here in that employee area, and then trying to find their way across and over and around to the door over there. Just from a functional standpoint, they're going to want their traffic to be coming in and utilizing the parking that is adjacent to the building. As David mentioned, there could be some outpatient services that would be utilized there, and you really are trying to get your customers, your patients, in front of the door, the closest parking to the building as possible. So there's a couple things, I think, as I mentioned, why we do have some other connectivity in the site that doesn't make that as critical. First of all, there is a connection between the new building and the parking garage, the physical parking garage. There's a proposed skywalk that would provide the connectivity, so if you park in the parking garage, not in the employee parking lot, you have a way to get over to that new building. And then the second component is obviously the addition of that connection to the south. So it does provide some additional connectivity, vehicular connectivity throughout the site. So those are the two main things. I'm going to go ahead and let Wade and then Mark, if he has something to add, talk a little bit more about the site and why it's designed this way, why this grade issue comes up, and a little bit more about the functionality. And then, when he's done, we'll all be available for any questions you might have.
Thanks, Danae. Wade Stang, Davis Design. I've been working with a hospital, and we've been working together with the city for the past several months, and just, I'd like to start with giving you a little bit of background, maybe look at more of the macro situation at the campus. As David mentioned earlier in his remarks, this really is a standalone-type site. The services and, and things that'll be offered here are meant to be people coming during the day, having their services, and then leaving. The way the campus has been organized, currently, most of the traffic comes along from Cotner and Forty-Eighth to the hospital and the medical plaza, which is their outpatient services building. And in recent years, they did a good job graphically of trying to organize that, so people know where they're going to go. They've identified the hospital as Zone A, and the parking structure along Forty-Eighth Street as the Zone A parking garage, so patients going to the hospital know where to park. They've zoned the medical plaza, and the Edwards Medical Office Building as Zone B. The Cotner parking structure is noted as the Zone B parking structure, making it clear for people that are either going to the plaza or going to the Women's and Children's Tower to park in Zone B. The area, as Danae mentioned, to the north of this that was discussed by Planning as being connected to the site, is really an egress area from that parking deck. The lowest level slopes down to the north, and it's an egress area, and it's tenant-only parking. There are patients that go to the plaza that park in that structure, but they're on the upper levels. The lower levels are tenant-only, and it's really meant as an egress area, so they can get back out on the Cotner. As Danae mentioned, there are significant grade issues as well. And in this document here, Mark, is illustrated in purple where the sidewalks are. I didn't know if you wanted to comment on that a little bit, Mark?
Yeah, and just, Mark Palmer, Olson Associates, just on the grade issue, just backing up a step, there's approximately about thirty-five feet of elevation difference from a point here on the vacated Everett Street back down to this, to this point where that access could potentially be. And this building, and Wade might go into a little more detail, has two actual access points on two different levels, so we're, we're looking at a walkout-style building to maximize the use of the grade that's, that's wrapping around this corner. However, that, that accounts for about fifteen feet of grade, when we have from about this corner to this corner about twenty-two feet of elevation difference. And so we end up about seven feet still higher here than the road, and interestingly enough, this, this parking garage is actually recessed even below Fiftieth Street. If you go out and look at it, it's, it's recessed and, and excavated into the, the bank here, and so the grades from making something work in the way of access from here up to here, up to here, is just, is very hard to make attainable. And from a vehicular access and also from a pedestrian access, and stairs are something that's not of interest. I mean, you'd be looking at a seven or an eight-foot elevation with stairs, which is something that, that Bryan does not want to have on the campus. And so the, the network of sidewalks, and just backing up a little, is just to show that we do have the connectivity, we do have our perimeter connectivity as well as the interior connectivity through, and with the addition of the skywalk, there are, there are ways to get to places, but between these two areas, the physical grade elevation is, is very challenging to make, to make those connections work.
And I'll, I'll speak a little bit as to the why. The site is very, there's incredible topography there. From the southeast corner to northeast, northwest corner, there's a forty-foot drop. So it drops along what is now Everett Street to the west, and then drops again as you go to north to A Street. So in order to make this a functional building for healthcare, we had to take earth in the southeast corner and move it to the northwest and try and level it out, create parking situations which aren't too steep. There's still going to be some slope to them. And then we made best use as we could of the site in terms of how we've established the entrances. The walkout, as Mark mentions, to the north, will be our outpatient services entrance, and that will be on first level. And then at second level, the entrance to the east, that will be for the medical office, the clinical services entrance. So the parking is designed to be close to each of those entrances. Many of the patients that come there will be non-ambulatory, just like me today. And so, you know, we're sensitive of that. They want to be close to the entrance, they want to have good access, and we don't want to make it difficult for them to get there. The other challenge of, of trying to tie this all together is, we're mixing two different uses. If, if we tie it together, we're mixing public access with serviced access. And the reason we're keeping part of Fiftieth Street there as a service drive is, you know, that's the way we're going to service the building. We'll have trash pickup on the south side of the building, we're going to have an oxygen tank at the southwest corner that will need to be filled every now and then. And then further to the north, that west or east side of, of the Cotner parking garage or the Zone B garage is where we have our snow removal. If you go out there today, you'll see what I'm talking about. Public comes in on the, on the west side of that garage, so we dump the snow to the west side, and it's designed so that we can get vehicles back there to remove snow. Yeah, I think that sums it up.
Just to make sure I'm looking at the map correctly, that is a parking lot egress from the parking lot onto Everett, right? There, there's a little entrance there, okay.
Yeah, that was not in our original... Yeah, that was not in our original special use permit submittal. So that was something that was added to try and create better access internally.
Right, okay.
And what street is it that leads out from the Everett access south? Is that 51st?
Yes.
Okay. And then that connects up with Sumner?
Was, I don't know that it's called that anymore. It's internal now.
Internal? But would that connect all the way down to Sumner?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes?
Wade or Mark, can you, there's another drawing, and I can't read it very well on my screen, but can you trace a south and/or westerly movement from that parking lot access point to Everett back? I'm more interested in where it goes west from south of Everett. I understand that that entrance area goes all the way south to Sumner, right?
Yeah.
That's what you just said?
Yeah.
But what does it do if you get into parking lots and you wanna try to get to a westerly movement? Trace that for me, 'cause I can't.
It would take you back to Sumner.
Okay, so the only, the only...
There is no connection.
There's no connection back to the...
That's correct.
Okay. All buildings all the way through.
Okay.
Other questions? Any questions for the rest of the group?
Could you confirm the 74, just for the record, the new building?
We will, I can't off the top of my head, but we will.
Okay, great, thank you.
Anything else? I guess that's it. Danae, you have anything to question? Okay, great. Is there anyone here wishing to testify in support of this item? Is there anyone here wishing to testify in opposition of this item? Do we have questions for staff? Paul, why don't you come on up and talk about the conditions?
Paul, what are your feelings on their proposed motion to amend?
With the Everett access?
Sure.
That's something that helps. That's...
Be okay with doing this internal connection and getting rid of the one across 50th Street?
I think our department would still like to see the western connection. And although it's not a primary connection for everyday, you know, heavy traffic, it's still an important connection, may be used very infrequently, may be used by some of the staff, because that is an employee parking lot. But that vehicular connection is, is something that we would still like to see in addition to the Everett connection.
Paul, is there, I don't know if this is clear or not, but is there a design standard or some sort of criteria that the city requires parking lots on a contiguous site to be connected internally so that, so that there doesn't have to be an exit to a public street and then back into another parking lot on that property?
There's a design standard for pedestrian circulation in commercial and industrial developments.
What about vehicular?
Vehicular, I think we just look at in terms of, you know, the overall circulation principles found in the comprehensive plan and what makes the most sense from a planning perspective. And so this, this wouldn't necessarily be a design standard or a request to waive a design standard to not have this. But in terms of thinking of all possibilities and just circulation throughout the entire campus, this is how we have come to our recommendation.
Paul, and just confirming, you're okay with the deletion of condition 2.5?
We are okay with that. We did talk with public work staff, and they reviewed the plan since this was drafted, and they're okay with removing that as well.
Paul, can you just show us on the map that's there, they made their motion to amend with 2.7. Can you show me where you, just so I can see it, where you would like to see that additional connection off of 50th Street, just so I...
Okay, so, and I kinda had a...
Or a different map is fine.
A map of this also, but Vacated 50th Street is shown as this service drive here, and there is kind of this, this new return that's added to the site plan. Today, this employee parking lot looks like this. So there's this paved area that comes further to the south, and I think by estimation that return would be somewhere, you know, in this area. And so the connection that seems most likely would be, you know, at that return and then, you know, through this, through this area that's here. Does that make sense?
And that's vehicular connection that you're talking about?
That would be vehicular. Again, we're not saying exactly how it's to be done, but in looking at this entire eight-acre site that's being completely redeveloped and completely regraded, you know, there should be some opportunity to accommodate these.
Sure, and the roof of the building we're looking at is, in the picture that you put up, is the parking garage, right?
This would be the parking garage that's noted here.
Right, and people do, when they exit that parking garage, they have to drive through that employee lot to get out, right? That's one of the exits out of the parking garage?
I don't know if they have to. I think that there's some points over here. Is that true? Okay, yeah, so there's some points over here. You know, this, this employee area does have access to the garage as well, but I think that, you know, patients going there could use...
Right, but isn't it kind of designed to lead patient traffic to turn left out of that parking garage and get back up to Cotner to exit the facility? And so if you built a connection over to the east, you're gonna lead people to exit that parking garage and wanna drive back through campus instead of exiting the facility, aren't you?
I don't think it would necessarily lead them to do that. It's an option. It's not, you know, it's not a huge driving aisle, you know, through the campus like this 51st, formerly 51st Street right-of-way would be. It's, it's just that additional connection that's an option. It's, it's connecting to a service drive. It's not a main thoroughfare through the campus.
Okay.
Paul, did you say that you are or not supportive of the eliminating 2.3, the sidewalk?
That is correct. We'd still like to see that sidewalk connecting to the north side of the building from the west.
And given the grade issues, is there any ADA things that you have to think about there as far as it's too, too much of a slope to get down?
Absolutely, yes. So ADA would have to be reviewed and met with the connections there. Again, regrading eight acres, you know, what are our options here? Is this the only way we can go about it? We're not saying that this is how you do it. We're saying we need to, we need to provide that in some fashion.
Can you show us where you would want that pedestrian access to attach?
The point is to get, you know, a connection that, like I said, this, this sidewalk exists today to 51st Street, or 50th Street, excuse me, sidewalk. All we're saying is that that movement should continue just further to the east so someone could get to this entrance here. It's not a long connection.
Get to that entrance from what, the employee parking lot?
They could be coming from a number of places with, you know, throughout this campus. Maybe they're coming from the public sidewalk, from, you know, somewhere over here.
Can they walk down the sidewalk on the west side of the street though?
So if they were to come, yes, there's a sidewalk that's, that's along 50th Street. They could take that, I guess, further east to a crossing. Not sure how this lines up with the new Everett proposal.
Just show me where the entrances are, maybe that's what I'm missing.
The building entrances would have...
There's one there.
This here on the east and then this here on the north.
So there's, there's no entrance along what used to be 50th Street?
Right, so there's no entrance on the western facade or the southern portion other than, you know, maybe some of these kind of service entrances. There are some sidewalks shown, but I don't think that those would be intended for patients of the medical building.
Other questions for Paul?
Yeah, I have a couple.
Tracy?
Paul, in your report, I just, I couldn't envision this, so if you could kind of, it's number 11 on page six. Oh no, I'm sorry, number eight. You're talking about dedicating land for a right-hand turn lane. Oh, I'm sorry, my nose is acting up here. From north to eastbound turn lane at 48th and Sumner Street, can you show me that on the map?
So the intersection of, then, this is 48th Street and this is Sumner. The expansion area we're talking about is located up here. Again, this is an amendment to the entire special permit area, so we were looking at all intersections that may be impacted by this campus. The north to east movement we're talking about is coming up north 48th, north on 48th, excuse me, and then making an east movement onto Sumner. And so the turn lane would be, you know, impacting this corner property that is owned by Brian today.
They own that house, that corner?
That corner.
Residential house. Okay.
Anything else? Any other questions for Paul? Thanks. Applicant rebuttal?
Tracy?
Barry, do you have the clinics?
Again?
Thanks.
Thank you.
David Reese again. I just wanted to comment, you asked some great questions about our plaza parking or Zone B garage parking structure. And just to set the record straight, for our patient and visitors, when they do exit our parking structure, there is exit on the west side of that parking structure. So they exit out of the west side, and then they go to the north to exit out on that Cotner Street. As Wade mentioned earlier, the lowest level of this parking garage is our tenant parking. And then that's where they go off to that north parking, that flat lot that is lower today, it's embedded in that bank. And so that has always been, from, from the owner's perspective, Brian, that has always been our concern with the sidewalk and the street there because of patient and visitor safety, especially for that sidewalk maintaining it months like this that we have right now. So that's why we have the enclosed walkway, so that from a safety perspective for folks that are going through, like Wade and his situation, things like that, it allows for them safety to get to that building in a covered enclosed area and not have to deal with this sidewalk and the grade issues and dealing with that side of it. And then also the vehicular traffic, because it's coming out of that employee lot, it's really the difficulty of connecting that. And the other piece of it, from our perspective, the owner, if our patients or visitors for this site end up going to this area or others, we didn't do a good job in our signage, 'cause our goal is they need to get to the spot right to the door. If they're dealing with oxygen, things of that nature, and compromised health, we gotta make sure they're getting to the right place to begin with. And that's our goal. And so that's why we set it up the way we did, so it doesn't cause confusion and issues for them trying to find the location they need to be at. So I just wanted to set that straight, so you had that understanding.
I would just ask though, having a mom who's gotten lost in this parking, you know, it is easy, you know, with all the different parking garages and especially the changes at Brian. If you, you know, if you knew Brian back when, they only had a parking lot, now there's all these parking garages. If you get somebody in that parking garage who needs to go to the other building, do you think it makes sense to have a way for them to just walk over rather than get confused and have to get back in their car and go back around? That's my only thought, because, you know, I could see my mom parking there and saying, "Oh, that's not the right place, but I just need to get over there," you know? And so I wonder about if, if there might be some benefit to just that little sidewalk piece.
Yeah, Kathy, you bring up a great point, and that's why we did the skywalk. Because if you, if you think about folks like your mom or my parents or things like that, I'd rather have them traverse through a skywalk where it's climate control and it's, if something happened and they fell, somebody there knew about it versus if they're outside traversing in the sidewalk and it's, it has to meet ADA, so you may have switchbacks and like, because of the grading. It would be much better to go through that and so have proper signage so they could use that skywalk.
But you will have some signage in the garage that will indicate, you know, walkway to medical plaza or whatever?
Right. Our goal is, most of it would be...
Hopefully nobody will park there in the first place they need to get there.
Most of it would be staff, correct. But yes, if they need to get over to that, that building, they could utilize that. That's the goal. Our goal is so that they don't have to use the outside. That's why we put walkways in the garage, Zone A garage, we have an underground walkway, so they can use that and not utilize the sidewalks on days like this. West campus, we put in the skywalk that connects the parking garage to our building, so they don't have to use the streets because of that concern of slipping and falling, and we just don't want that, best we can.
Yeah, and I would just add, one of the things, you know, on that grade is, it seems simple enough to just make a connection, but with that grade, you're not gonna just make a connection. I mean, there are utilities and things that are staying in 50th Street, which also provides, you know, some sort of a restraint for what you can do there, but it would have to be some sort of a switchback in order to accommodate that grade. So it's, it's not like it's just a straight, easy shot across there. And I think for all the reasons from a, from a patient standpoint that, you know, Brian has thought through, it just doesn't make a lot of, of sense for them for what they're trying to do and how they're trying to get their patients to the buildings. I mean, I think I'd just say in closing, we've worked, we've worked a lot on the site. We have, Brian has made a lot of compromises on the things that we've shown with the right-of-way and, and some of the other things. We've pushed him pretty hard to make compromise and to work with the city, and I think this is just one where they can't, because it doesn't really fit in with the overall way that they're trying to have this site function as far as getting their patients into the front door. And I think adding that additional connection potentially adds additional confusion. So we're asking for those amendments to the two, to the two conditions, or actually three, 'cause the other one that planning agrees with.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I have a question. So that first-floor entrance right there, that's a canopy, I'm assuming that people can drive under. Now, is that orange piece a barrier so that they cannot continue onto that service drive? Because if they're coming in...
This orange piece?
Well, just that little tail there, if they're coming in underneath that entrance, what's gonna prevent them from just keep going straight and then turning left down that service drive?
The grade. They're not gonna be able to get down there. There will be no road connection. This is, this is basically the edge of the parking lot. They just have it highlighted so you could see the grade differential from...
So they would have to turn back?
From the edge. They're basically, I don't know if they're coming in this way or if they're coming in this way, and they just swing through. You got a little bit of handicap parking right here, which would be the edge.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Great, thanks.
Need to call them items separately?
Special permit 1219M for authority to amend special permit number 1219L to expand the Brian Medical Center East Campus for construction of a 93,286 square foot medical office building, parking, and green space, and a waiver to increase the building height of the district on property generally located at South 50th and A Streets.
Move approval as amended by the applicant.
Well, second, Beecham.
Luston Beecham, discussion?
I'll start with my part about the public schools, if I may. I, I really like the connection using what would be 51st Street. Anybody who's ever been near an elementary school during drop-off and pickup knows that it's bedlam, and I think the more that we can encourage traffic not to be on South 52nd, the better. So I would though ask the applicant to reach out to the principal, because I, I think this could have big implications for, maybe they may wanna change some of their strategies. And I'm, I am actually okay with not requiring the road connection, because as Janelle said, I feel like right now that parking garage is really designed to lead people to the right exit, and I feel like putting the road connection in might actually get folks a little bit more lost in the maze of the buildings. I'm a little bit on the fence about the sidewalk, because no matter how well you try, you're gonna have somebody who parked in their own garage and goes to the closest entrance and tries to find their way over. And I'm just worried that someone's gonna be trying to do that, and so I'd actually be interested to hear what other people think about that one, 'cause I'm, I'm a little bit on the fence on that, that piece.
Janelle?
I, I don't think the sidewalk connection where it's proposed makes sense in this particular instance, and normally I'm a huge supporter of sidewalk connectivity, mostly because... because I, I don't think that sidewalk connection is going to lead to any sort of entrance to the building. It's at most going to lead them into a parking lot that's even more confusing as to where they go or to the back of the building. And so I think actually not having that as an option to a more confusing entrance is, is the better approach here, especially with the parking garage that is gonna direct people to the right place and as a user of the existing medical plaza there and that parking garage. They do do a good job if you are somewhat lost there. The minute you walk out into one of those buildings, there's somebody there to help you. And so I think the parking garage indoor connection is the better option here than an outside sidewalk that is hard to grade, probably isn't gonna be ADA compliant, and I think would actually lead more, to more confusion.
Other comments? Dennis?
I'm not thrilled with the connectivity from a vehicular standpoint or a pedestrian standpoint on the site. But having said that, I, I think just looking at the property and how Bryan, over the last, I don't know how many decades, have had to piecemeal uses together in buildings and parking lots and circulation roads and sidewalks, it is very difficult. And I think there are, there are ways that Wade has, has designed this to circumvent what would be a more ideal situation if he could have done it another way. If it was, if it was a brand-new parcel of land and you could, you could organize it any way you wanted, you wouldn't have done it this way. But because it's piecemeal, I'm gonna be okay with it, and I'm gonna support the motion, in part largely because of what Janelle said. It's just, there's, there's some weird things that would happen with both of those circulation modes if we were to try to hammer something that really didn't fit well. So it's unfortunate, but it's something I think you just have to work with on, on a site like this.
Anyone else?
I, um, I kinda have a problem with that connection, because I think, I, I understand that we're piecemealing this together, but I think that now is the time, while we're doing grading, to get that fixed. And I know that uses change over time, and we've just seen that since I've been on the commission, where you guys have had to alter the use of your emergency room access and layout and that kind of thing. And I think that there might come a time in the future where you guys might want that connectivity between that parking garage or what is now a parking garage and, and this area. And so I think that it's easier to do that grading now, while it's empty, than down the road when you're gonna have to do more, it's gonna be more complicated to get that fixed. So I'm not really thrilled with, with getting rid of that sidewalk and vehicular connection on that South 50th Street part.
Anyone else? I'm gonna plan, I plan to support the motion as, as it was amended. I think that obviously Bryan's been a great partner for the city, and this is a, a large, large project. I hate to get wrapped around just a sidewalk and a road, but the fact is, is if there is demand for a sidewalk, I'm sure that Bryan will recognize that at some point and, and build something, so. Jerry, would you please call the vote?
Sure. Beecham?
Yes.
Cornelius?
Yes.
Cor?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Lust?
Yes.
Sunderman?
Yes.
Shear?
Yes.
Hove?
Yes.
Motion carried, eight to zero. Okay, next item is Street and Alley Vacation 15006 to vacate South 50th Street between A Street and Everett Street, and to vacate Everett Street and Washington Street between South 50th Street and South 52nd Street, generally located at South 50th Street and A Streets. Sound recommendation is conformance with comprehensive plan.
Entertain a motion?
Move approval. Lust?
Second, Harris.
Jerry, please call the vote.
Beecham?
Yes.
Cornelius? Yes.
Cor?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Lust?
Yes.
Sunderman?
Yes.
Shear?
Yes.
Hove?
Yes.
Motion carried, eight to zero. Next item for administrative action is Use Permit Number 64B to allow a special permitted use for a non-residential healthcare facility on property generally located at South 16th Street and Old Cheney Road. This is final action by the Planning Commission unless appealed to the City Council within 14 days.
Is there any expertise?
Are there any expertise communications to be disclosed at this time?
I see none. Rachel?
Rachel Jones with the Planning Department. Just to recap, this application is for
Rachel, just, I'm sorry, I should have read something that Jerry had given me. Because the Planning Commission failed to obtain a majority vote on two separate motions for this application at its January 20th, 2016 meeting, the Commission deferred action to today's hearing. There will be no public hearing held on this application, however, please note that there is a revised staff report and recommendation based on the applicant's amended application. Please proceed, thanks.
So just briefly recap, this is an application for a proposed non-residential healthcare facility. We're generally located at South 16th Street and Old Cheney Road. We had talked previously about the recommended policy in the Joint Staff, Joint Staff Report on Land Use and Health, which would recommend, in this case, that patient rooms be located at least 300 feet from the I-2 zoning district to the east, over here. And the original site plan had shown patient rooms located 195 feet away. The Planning Department was supportive of that. However, the Health Department was recommending denial based on patient rooms not being located the 300-foot distance away. And so since the, the public hearing, in consideration of the feedback that was received, the applicant has submitted a motion to amend their application. And it includes a revised site plan that would locate patient rooms 275 feet from the I-2 zoning district. And to achieve that, they rotated the building about 45 degrees and shifted it west, so that patient rooms are shifted about 80 feet farther than they originally were. And the applicant has stated that they were somewhat limited in shifting it the full 300 feet based on the topography of the site. There is a drop-off in grade as you continue from east to west. The facility is planned to be all on a single level, and so they found that that created some real issues for them with their west side entrance. As it is, they already have put in a retaining wall kind of across the west side entrance there in order to account for that grade change. And then it should also be noted that they did have, you know, lose some commercial space in the pad site that's to the west of this one with the shift of the building as well. And so the Health Department has stated that they are supportive of this revised site plan, with the understanding that the original conditions 1.1 through 1.3 of this will still apply, which relate to submitting an evacuation plan to the satisfaction of the Health Department, notifying the Health Department when they become aware of any hazardous materials nearby, and fitting their HVAC system so that it has a shut-off valve in the event of an emergency. And then the applicant is also going to be voluntarily installing fire and smoke-rated doors, I think approximately here on the other side of the central station, which would isolate the three residential wings further in the event of an emergency as well. And they also requested that I show some photographs, which depict examples of what the proposed facility will look like. Here we have a, a photo of, I believe it's another promontory healthcare facility, which will show what this will look like. You can see it's got some stone and wood, woodwork on the facade there. And then this shows what the interior will look like for one of the common areas.
Any questions for Rachel? Thank you.
Thanks.
Derek Zimmerman with the Baylor Urban Law Firm, 1248 O Street, Suite 600. I think Rachel with the Planning Department did a good job of describing the changes that have been made. We really can't go any further west. It's not a convenience deal, it's a, it's a practical deal. Additionally, if we did try to go further west with the building footprint, that would eliminate the ability to evacuate out of the west entrance, which is, so you would actually, it'd be counterproductive. You'd be sending people on the further west side, further east, to try to get out of the, of the building. The 300 feet by the Health Department is advisory, it's, it's not by ordinance, it's not mandated, and the Health Department has recommended approval. I think they've seen what we're offering to do here. We're taking some great steps to make sure that we alleviate any concerns. And the existing I-2 building to the east is outside of 300 feet. It, they're, the measurement of 275 is to the setback line, but to have a scenario where it would be within that 300 feet, you would actually have to have the Time Warner facility sell its property, a new user would have to come in, tear the building down and build it on the setback line. I think you're looking at additional, I think it's about 60 feet from the lot line. So there's, there's a lot of buffer, there's a lot of space. And again, they're still, they're offering to do the evacuation plan and all the other conditions, so we would ask for your approval. Do you have to answer any questions you may have?
Any questions for Derek?
Approximately, I think it said this in the report, and I can't remember, under this new layout, how many patient rooms would be within that remaining 25 feet?
I don't have the, I don't know the exact number of that, Dave. Do you know the number? It's, I mean, you're, it's generally, I'm sorry, I'm gonna be general with you, Tracy, I don't have an exact number.
Doesn't it look like it's gonna be very
It's not, I mean, yeah, you're looking at generally kind of the ones along here and along here. I think you get more of a buffer once you get right there. I don't have an exact number for you. I mean, the fact is, they're concerned about all of the, all of the patients, and, and so that's why they were willing to do what they were willing to do. And that's why you have interior, interior, you know, shut-offs, and, and they're gonna be setting forth a plan. But, you know, from, from the, the lot, you know, from the, where the existing building, you're outside of 300 feet. If there was a new building that came in and they put on that lot line, you're talking about a matter of 20 feet, and that's why you have those other plans in place to make sure nothing bad happens.
Any other questions for Derek? Okay, thank you. Have any questions for staff? If not, I entertain a motion.
Move approval as amended.
Second?
Discussion?
This is a great compromise by the developer. I realize we're still 25 feet short, but they've got the Health Department approval, and I think it was a good compromise, and I'm gonna support the application.
Anyone else? I just want to compliment the applicant for revising the plan. I, you know, I think that what you had in the beginning was good, but this is even better, so. Jerry, please call the vote.
Beecham?
Yes.
Cornelius?
Yes.
Cor?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Lust?
Yes.
Sunderman?
Yes.
Shear?
Yes.
Hove?
Yes.
Okay, motion carried, eight to zero.
I'd just like to take the point of personal privilege, my daughter Sarah is here. She's taking a class, and her instructor at UNL told her that she had to go to the Planning Commission meeting. At this time, anyone wishing to speak on an item not on the agenda may do so. We're adjourned.